So it is 6:30, we have a quorum. So as clerk of the planning board, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Our chairman is at town hall as we speak verbally continuing the zoning public hearing to this Zoom meeting later on. And he is also continuing the the scheduled public hearing for Three High Meadow Road to a future date after the emergency is lifted. And he is continued, when he gets back, will continue the public hearing for Michelson to a future date. So if anyone is here for Three High Meadow, it will, there will be no substantive discussion of it tonight. Oh, and it looks like Jim is back. He is connecting in.
That's a little bit fast to travel.
Well, it only took him a minute to, maybe he's calling in.
I think he's calling in.
So let's start since with our administrative section. Since we don't have a sign in sheet, I am not sure who is here for what. So if I can just go down sort of in the order people appear on my screen. We have Tom Reedy. We have Amy Brown slash Isabel Brussels. We have Dylan Mans, Karen Golding, Richard Alcorn. Who is here for questions and who is here just to see what's going on? Bill, I know you have business.
Yes.
And Richard, I know you have business. And then we have a phone number not otherwise identified, 582-7040.
Dylan is here just to listen.
Okay.
Yeah, we're here to observe as well, Karen Golding and myself.
Yes, I'm just here to listen. Thank you.
Okay. Karen Golding is the name that shows up on the screen, so I don't know who else is there. Doesn't matter, I just want to be sure. So Amy Brown?
Yeah, I'm happy to clarify, Bill. This is Amy Brown. I am here to observe and watch your proceedings. And Karen Golding is my sister. We are doing both here to observe and to watch the proceedings.
Okay, that's fine. So we have one person who is calling in. And I have a couple of chats here. Richard is here, Alcorn is here for business. I think maybe Jim just turned his computer on or something. So we have that one phone number that is muted, but 413-582-7040.
Hi, that's Richard Alcorn. I'm just calling in. I'm dialed in by the computer. We're calling in for the sound.
Oh, okay. All right. So you're two of the folks. Okay, so I think we just have one thing for Pioneer Valley Chinese Subvention Charter School, and that is the storage shed. And Mr. Alcorn did send us revised drawings or supplemental drawings, which I forwarded around to everybody. Did everyone have a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Which one?
Actually, I will, Jim is on board now, so I'm going to pass the mighty gavel back to him.
We continue what you're talking about, Bill. I didn't catch that last part.
Oh, we just, I just had gone through sort of a roll call to create a list of who wants to speak with us about what.
Okay.
And so we're just ready to talk. Mr. Alcorn appears as Richard and as the phone number, so he has better sound.
Okay.
And I had sent around the revised supplemental drawings he had prepared.
Oh, yeah, of the storage shed.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Richard, you're on.
Yeah, well, you'd asked for drawings and I sent the drawings around. There was concern about the Conservation Commission, and the woman from the Conservation Commission did come by. I don't know if she got in touch with you. She only indicated that she felt wanted that there would be a barrier, I don't know, hay or something, whether between the construction and the detention basin. She had done some research to see whether the detention basin had originally included any conservation land, which I guess it did not. So it does not really, it seems as if it did not fall under conservation at that point. And so she has suggestions, but I assume she will talk to you. The only question I have is, when I started this, I sort of worked with the assumption that maybe we'd be putting it on crushed stone. I'm glad to do that. The other option is, and I know that there's some indication from the building inspector that he would like it held down some, or he wanted an architect to look at it and do a stamp on it. And so it could be held down with things in the ground. The other alternative would be to put down a foundation. And I don't know, I wanted to ask whether you have an opinion one way or another about putting down a concrete slab. Is that something that I can do if we want to? Or would you prefer crushed stone?
I don't believe the planning board cares what it sets on. That's really more of a building inspector issue. We're more concerned with the aesthetics of it and stuff. And so therefore, if, you know, if the building issue presented, the picture you sent us is what you're going to construct, then I think we're good with that part of it. As far as how it sets, it's irrelevant to us. That's more, like I said, that's a building issue, building, code building inspector issue.
And the pictures were done by the supplier, and so I think they're an accurate representation of what we will be building, yes.
Okay. Then we should be good. Any other comments on that particular storage building?
The fire department was okay with it too.
Okay.
It's a wholly sprinkler building, so they're not as concerned about getting rear access.
Okay. Motion to approve and leave site plan approval on that storage building?
I will take the motion.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I will get a little note off to the building inspector, Richard, and it may take a day or two, and then it should be good to go after that.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I will forward the drawings you shared with us to the building inspector.
Okay.
Thank you again. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Who's next, Bill?
Tom Reedy.
Who's he?
Good question.
The problem with Zoom is anybody can get in.
Well, good to see everybody. I hope everybody's doing well, staying healthy. I'm here on behalf of Keith Raybine tonight. So Keith acquired the 64 acre parcel. There's actually two parcels. I think it's 10D parcel 61 and 61-1. It's land off of North Maple Street and Rocky Hill Road. There's no frontage on Rocky Hill Road, but that's probably the closest cross street. It's the land behind Elaine Manor. You probably remember it. I think it was going to be part of the five college book repository or warehouse, depending on what you actually consider it. And so...
I believe the motion said warehouse.
You don't have to worry about that. That's a...
That's right. Water under the bridge. So Keith bought that end of last year with the intent of placing his homestead. So just to build a single family home on probably 62.8 acres of it. So there is frontage along North Maple Street. He has sufficient frontage to actually carve off another building lot. And so we will probably, at your June 2nd meeting, be bringing in A&R in front of you for your endorsement. It will effectively divide all that land into two parcels, one being a 1.2 acre parcel with frontage on North Maple Street, and the balance of the land being the other parcel. And it's going to be on that parcel that he desires to build his home. It's the distance from North Maple Street where he has 200 feet of frontage. And it's 200 feet even though it's an AR because where he's looking to put the home is in the aquifer. So we've got 200 feet of frontage on North Maple Street, and we're preserving the lot width of 150 feet all the way back to that building. To get from North Maple Street to the building site would be about 2,500 linear feet. And there's probably some wetlands implications, potentially a stream crossing, et cetera. This parcel is benefited by an 18 foot wide easement that has existed since 1953. Edmund Smith and Margaret Clark granted it to Joseph and Francis Wilga. And so what Keith would be looking to do is to utilize that 18 foot wide easement which comes off of Rocky Hill Road to access his single family home. And so therefore not come off of North Maple Street. So it seems to me we need that Section 5.7 special permit from the planning board. So I wanted to discuss that with you, and then also to talk about the timing of submitting a special permit. Understanding that you're not holding any hearings, but if we were able to submit it to have it noticed, and then to just have it continue to whatever date, kind of that on the bus date where everything is going to get continued to, there will be that call of list, if you will, to identify subsequent dates. At least then, we're not trying to, let's say, in July or August. Because Keith wants us to try to build this house, assuming we get an approval, in the next couple of months. So I was just looking, I guess substantively on 5.7 and then timing with the hope that we could submit a special permit and go through that process. So when you do hold those hearings, it's all the procedural requirements are taken care of.
So Tom, Joseph Radek here. Are you dividing the discussion tonight into two various parcels? In other words, one, the A&R, the frontage on North Maple Street, and two, the special permit you're requesting for the driveway off of Rocky Hill Road?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the A&R...
That's by itself, yeah.
Right, right. That's, it's going to be endorsed because it's actual, not a lucory access on a public way. So I'm not so concerned about that. It's more the access over something other than the lawful frontage and looking to utilize a pre-existing easement to allow access to that, to that single family home. So that's, that's really the question.
I'll give you my... Go ahead, go.
Go ahead, Jim. You're probably good.
I'll give my comments that I made to the, I think you heard the last comments I made to about the access to the one off Cogier Drive. And the intent of the bylaw was that, you know, the person should own the land on both streets. In that particular case, that was, there was a lot behind that one off of Cogier Drive. That was a very small subdivision with all kinds of things for this, all kinds of subdivision requirement for that house to go in. And then they come kind of, you know, to use Joe's favorite term, they kind of get a little bit, and the nose in the door, and they keep coming back for more and more and more. And, you know, they should have come forward with that, with the initial plan, in my estimation, if that's what they wanted to do. Would we have granted it? I don't know. I probably would not have been in favor of it because they've got the access off of Middle Street, which is, you know, not a horrible, it's not that busy of a street usually. Maybe it's not by any means a slow street. And, you know, that's the way the subdivision is written. In a particular case of your client, it's a little bit different. It becomes not so much that they need the frontage on, I mean, they have the legal frontage on North Maple, but it also becomes an environmental issue in your case. You know, if it was just a long driveway, put the long driveway in. You know, that's my opinion. I would not be in favor of it if it was just a 2,500 foot driveway. Well, they knew that when they bought the lot. However, being an environmental issue, clean, stream crossing, wetlands issue, that raises a different scenario to me. And I would not be against that, that access across other than frontage because of the environmental concerns.
Okay, thank you.
That's my two senses. I don't know how the rest of the members would feel.
Well, the other part of it in the bylaw, it says not to exceed 500 feet. And this is way beyond 500 feet. So that's, that's, that's not a couple of feet beyond. It's 1,500 feet. So it's a significant difference. And the other thing is, that is a very, very steep hill to access.
Which one, off of Rocky Hill or North Maple?
One off of Rocky Hill.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's dramatically steep. It's not, it's, you know, what do our subdivision regulations say? I don't know. 10% to 15% pitch is usually what's allowed, but this is much more. So I see several issues, you know, certainly the environmental issue. And the fact is, it's, how many feet, 25 feet, the right of way, Tom Reedy?
18.
18.
18.
How long would the driveway be from Rocky Hill to their, to the house?
That is a great question. Let me, let me see if I can do it quick.
You said it was 2,500 feet if they came off of North Maple?
Yes. And this, I mean, without knowing exactly where the house is going to be, but if you go to your GIS system and you do an aerial, you'll see on parcel 61 where that clearing is. That's where the house would go, and it looks like it's about, as the crow flies, 500 and some odd feet. Let's see if I can trace it out a little bit. Yeah, 600, 700 feet probably is what we're looking at.
Okay, if it's a steep driveway, without knowing that, that would be a concern for emergency vehicle access. Because in the dead of winter, it may be a challenge for an emergency vehicle.
Sure. And we can certainly take a look at that. I mean, I think conceptually, we were trying to get this first step, and then the design obviously is the subsequent step, which we can come back with. You know, and I think once he gets onto his property, then he can zig and zag however he needs to, to make sure that the grades work if he wants to.
How long is it, ballpark, how far from the route, from the, how long is the right of way to his property?
That looks like... 106 feet, it looks like, off the plan.
Okay. I mean, I haven't seen, I haven't looked to have a chance to look at the drawings this afternoon when it came through, so that's why I'm asking these questions.
Sure, sure. Yeah, it looks like 106 feet from Rocky Hill Road to the property line.
Okay.
Tom, this is more of a legal question, but many easements in Hadley were considered agricultural or farm easements. And I remember when it was the McNiff Farm, and that was a concern back then. And evidently that was acquired probably as an agricultural easement. So can it be changed?
So the language on the deed is pretty general. It's just the right of way. And I don't think that putting a single family home would be overburdening that easement. I think we feel pretty comfortable with that. If he wanted to use that as access for a subdivision, you know, we may be having a different conversation, and there's probably some argument that it is being overburdened. But I think for a single family home, there's not, there's no issue.
So in your drawing that was presented to us, you had Lot 1 and Lot 2 adjacent to each other. So you had the A&R one on North Maple Street. So were you considering two houses or just dividing it into two lots?
Frankly, I don't know why it was parcel 2 and parcel 3. I think that should, my understanding this whole time has been Lot 1 exists on North Maple, and then the balance of the land is one parcel. I don't know if the surveyor just kept the assessor's property lines for some reason.
Okay, so that's what that line is through there. All right.
Correct, yes. Yeah, yeah. That's where the existing division is.
That's my assumption. Probably has two sources of title.
Yes, yes. And so I think that's vestigial. What we'll probably do is just have them redraw, combining those, and just making it so this whole parcel will end up being two lots overall. One right on North Maple Street and the other from Keith's house.
So will we need a public hearing for this special permit now?
Yes, yes.
And what could potential objections be by, from a butters, Tom? Any idea?
You never know. I mean, the fact that something there is going there that's different than what exists currently. You know, and so Rocky Hill, there's potential views. I don't, you know, not being familiar enough where Keith is going to cite his house, I can't imagine that it's going to be of a height that is going to obstruct folks on Rocky Hill from seeing the range. You know, I don't think, and it's not heavy traffic. You know, there'll be some construction traffic, obviously, so that, you know, if there's some construction logistics that need to be worked out. But it's really no different than, you know, I think there's a house that was just constructed a couple of lots down on Rocky Hill, and I don't know that there were any special provisions put in.
But this is a legal use of the property. They're not going to be taking any legal Dover amendments or anything to say they have a right to do this. They've got a legal right to do this.
Correct.
Yeah, so...
And I think it's a really good use of the property.
Yeah, we're going to get some taxes on it as opposed to, and I saw no taxes from the previous proposal. So that, you know, if this elevation thing can be resolved to our department satisfactorily and everybody else, I wouldn't have...
Yeah. There's some homework to be done on the access, Tom. You realize that.
I get you.
Tom, is that the easement that shows next to Lot 49?
Are you on the GIS?
No, I'm looking at the plan where you used yellow to highlight the...
Oh, yes. Yes, from Rocky Hill.
Because that's kind of a difficult corner there. So you're adding another driveway in there?
Well, technically...
I mean, that's not the issue tonight. That would be a special permit, but that's...
That already exists, so we're not putting anything there that doesn't already exist or that Keith wouldn't have a right to. You know, so if Keith wanted to today start accessing his property off of there? Okay, he could.
Now, the other question is probably not germane to this discussion now, Tom, but certainly he has a business. Is he planning to put his business in that area as well?
No, I think he's looking to put his business on Russell Street. If, I'm talking a little bit out of school, but I think that's where he's looking to put his business. In Hadley, though. And not at that site.
Correct.
Whoever's controlling the house, maybe in that mail attachment. If you're looking for the highlighted easement plan, if you go to the mail attachment.
Okay, I wasn't even sure if this was coming across as the...
Now, we just see your screen, Bill. Your, 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 um...
Your cursor is...
Okay. Just, it seems, screen sharing works, you know, one out of five times, so I'll just let that go.
If this is a single family lot, Bill, this is probably more of a legal question. Generally, the select board have a say in those access or driveway if it's not safe or is going to be delegated to the planning board?
Yeah, I mean...
Got a meeting.
I think they have a meeting, A&R.
Okay. Lost control of my phone there.
But Tom, the points that Jim raised are very valid ones. The steepness of the driveway that I raised, and certainly the environmental issues, and, you know, it's going to be wetlands and...
Sure. And Joe, if I could, my understanding of what Jim was saying, and obviously Jim jumped in, I thought he was saying that in this case, if there weren't any environmental issues, he would make us access this building location from North Maple Street, even though it's 2,500 linear feet. But he is saying that because to use that route, we would hit a stream, probably some natural heritage and potentially have, you know, a take or some other Division of Fisheries and Wildlife issue, that in this instance, he would be okay with, you know, barring the steepness and the other safety concerns of coming off of Rocky Hill Road, he would be okay with this Section 5.7 special permit allowing us to access it off of Rocky Hill Road. Jim, is that a fair characteristic?
That is correct. Yes. But again, you know, Joe raised a point of steepness, and, you know, how can that be addressed? I don't know. Okay.
We'll take, I'll walk the site tomorrow. We'll take a look. We'll figure it out.
Watch out for ticks. Seriously.
No, thank you.
So the decision before us tonight is, number one, the A&R lot, obviously on North Maple Street, can be approved, so it can be signed. And, but do you, do we have to say it has a valid enough point to schedule a special permit? Because that is the exception, not the rule, according to our zoning bylaws.
All we're looking to decide tonight is, are we violently against the access off of Rocky Hill? If we think it is at all feasible, then Tom is looking for that direction. If it's, even if it's remote, even if it's at all feasible by the board, then he would like to pursue that option, taking all of the potential hazards into consideration. But if we're totally against it, he won't pursue it. And my two senses, I am not violently against it. I'm willing to listen because of the wetlands and the stream crossing and stuff like that. Sounds like Mike is. Sounds like Bill is kind of open.
But let me ask, has no one else in town had built a house and had to deal with wetlands issues, and have they spent the money to deal with those issues?
There are a number of houses in town that have had to deal with wetlands issues.
So what's the difference here then?
Well, those houses had routes to... The one I can think of is there's one off of Farm Lane where they were looking for, correctly or wrong, Bill, was near the upper end of Farm Lane, near the hill, where there was like a big lot. They had a small buildable land, a plot or piece in the middle, at the far end of it. And I believe they were looking for access off the upper end of, uh...
Cazero.
Cazeros, okay. Because there was all kinds of wetland issues to get off of their frontage on Farm Lane.
Yes.
So I know that you're, you know, you said that, one of my first meetings, Jim, you told me that we don't set precedents at planning board meetings. But I guess, but my question is, are we setting a precedent by allowing a waiver for wetlands issue, when in fact we haven't done it in town before?
We're not, there's no, again, every, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to quote the law. Do I keep getting me grief about that? But zoning decisions typically do not set precedent. You can't be arbitrary and capricious. You have to have reasons for your decisions.
Right.
And the one off of Farm Lane, we had a reason. They were avoiding a wetlands issue. They came in as a different area. This one is a little bit similar. They have a wetland issue that can be avoided if they come off of a different location. Again, the length of the driveway to me is not that, is not important, or the, I hate to say it, but even. But environment... But environmentally, that raises some different concerns and.
But, but. Go ahead, Mike. Well, I would, I would support the fact we should do a special permit. The reason, the reason is, for example, it's, I say it's a steep hill. How steep is it? What is the pitch? Is it ten percent, twenty percent, or is it five percent or seven percent? So, we can get some more information and we do have, uh, regulations according to our subdivision in the town. Has certain regulations according to driveways. The other thing is too, we don't know about the, the, uh, wetlands issue. And Tom is schooled enough to, to, to probably go before the Conservation Commission. To see if he really does have a chance to go, to go before us for a special permit. The third thing is, uh, there have been issues with the spayed-toed frog as far as a endangered species. And that's certainly a wetland and the spotted turtle. Those two, uh, things sometimes can be dealbusters as they were off of Shattuck Road for the subdivision where they lost. Or lots due to the spotted turtle. And then the other one, uh, close to Will Bill, the wirelives, was the spayed-toed frog. They have to move the house. So, uh, there are issues and I think if we. If we can discuss the issue in a special permit situation, we'll, we'll have things hopefully with. Drives in front of us and probably a little bit more wetlands delineation, we can make a more intelligent decision rather than shooting.
We're also making a favorable economic decision on behalf of the person that's asking for the special permit. And we're saving him a lot of money if we grant the special permit. So, is there a quid pro quo here? I mean, Five College Inc. was gonna, they'll have walking trails there and everything else. Do we get, uh, is he willing to give, give the town something, Tom?
I, I don't think this is private property. I don't think we want, I, I would not be in favor of seeing walking trails on that area.
I didn't say that.
He'll, Matt, Mike, he'll give you his tax dollars. He'll build a beautiful house and, and pay some taxes for it.
Uh, we're, we're gonna be saving, what are we gonna, gonna be saving, a hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Uh, I have no idea.
There is another factor to consider that really ties in with what Jim was saying. The, uh, Conservation Commission really doesn't want to hear from you. About needing to cross wetlands if you have another option. So, um, yeah, if there's, if there's two ways of doing it and. The, the one around the wetlands is more expensive, the Conservation Commission doesn't want you to take that. Or whatever, they just don't want to, their job is protecting wetlands in their eyes.
Yeah, but, but if, if we don't give him a special permit to do this, then he doesn't have another option, does he?
That's, then he may have to go to option, back to Plan A.
Right.
So, I mean, in, in a nutshell, Tom, it sounds like, you know, we're, we're not saying absolutely no. We're saying we're gonna, we wanna see what, see the options, see the ideas, you know. You'll need to get a probably some kind of flagging. Is there really wetlands issue there? I think it was done, I think when they did looked at the, uh.
The book deposit.
Either the, the, the storage annex, the book storage, that I believe they did some flagging of wetlands there. That should still be valid.
Yes. And I mean, a simple look at your GIS, if, if you, if you take a look, I think you'll be able to see coming in off North Maple. You know, there, there's blue lines crisscrossing, you know, the site, so. And I think, I think, um, and then a little, where he's looking to come off of Rocky Hill, there's, there are no wetlands, so. I think you know, you know me well enough, I, I've heard the issues. We can certainly put together something that hopefully will convince all of you that this is. Uh, a good idea, can be safe, uh, it's non precedent setting because we've given you enough reasons why this is distinguishable. And, and then you can grant it, um, sometime in the future.
Just to quick comments on your thing to start, within a couple of months, I highly doubt that is possible.
Okay.
Given the state of the emergency and everything else that we've got, um, I mean, it sounds like. The, uh, Baker's plan of, uh, his phasing, these public hearings may be part of phase three. I'm guessing. And that's probably not gonna be for another, probably four to six weeks. Um, but that means that provided everything that he's got going on works well.
Right.
And doesn't raise, you know, we don't get increased encased again, et cetera, et cetera.
So, remember, when, when you're figuring occupancy, between the five of us and, uh. John operating the camera, we've got six people in the room to start with.
Yeah.
Um, we add you, your client, we're up to eight, and if any of the neighbors come out, we're over the ten person.
Yeah.
Yeah, which I, I think we're okay with that. I guess one of the things is if we could get the special permit. You know, the application, the, the plan at least in to notice it for hearings so that when we do come out of this and you. Have all of, you know, the backlog of all those hearings, um, that you've just been continuing, that we're on that list. So, we don't, at that point, just end up submitting, then just get to the newspaper, then just get marked up for hearing. That, I guess that's, that would be the request.
We are, I'm not, we're not accepting any applications right now. We've got a backlog of people waiting to submit. And it's, it, you know, whether you, you're, you're talking a couple of weeks. Um, you know, we've kind of got an organized, at, at least I have some kind of an idea of the backlog of who's coming in. So, once we can hold a public hearing, I will go by the list of what we've got of people that have talked to us on submissions. Um, I don't think anybody's holding back. I mean, it's only, there's only one in front of you.
Okay.
Okay, and that's an, that's an accessory apartment right out of here off Lawrence Plain.
Okay.
I'm not aware of anybody hiding in a bush and waiting to submit underneath them. Um, it's not exactly kind of people looking to, uh, to do a lot either, so.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
I've got my marching orders. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Good seeing everybody.
Finally.
What else, Bill?
Uh, probably should just go through the, um. The continuations.
Okay, we've got, uh, a continuation, we've got the, uh. Was it the, oh yeah, Julius and Marilyn Gungersheim for the special permit for the accessory apartment at three Hyde Meadow. That was scheduled for today, uh, obvious, obviously, uh, I went to the town hall and I continued. Those hearings to a date for a future date. To be announced. Kevin Michelson has been in contact with myself. And, well, I think, I think his attorney has too, more than anything. I mean, not, no. Attorney for the other people, but he's requested a public hearing date of August eighteenth, twenty twenty. And I told him I would reserve that date for him, provided that the state of emergency had been lifted and that we could hold public hearings. We really, we need a motion for that, Bill?
Uh, I think, yeah, probably should do a motion to accept his request to extend.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Kevin Michelson's request for a continuation. For his access special permit, accessory apartment at eighteen Grand Oak Farm Road to August eighteenth, twenty twenty. Pending that we can hold public hearings.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Right.
Passes unanimously. Okay, um. He, Mr. Michelson had been in contact with me. He's, uh, asked, asked a couple of questions. One of them was if we had ever turned down any accessory apartments. I said we have not refused any, but we did have one that was withdrawn, I believe on Cross Lane. Because of opposition for the neighbors, so they didn't pursue it. Um, and he's had, uh. He's in a bit of a disagreement with some of his neighbors, lived as, as such. And his attorney, Michael Pill, not his attorney, the neighbor's attorney is Michael Pill. And they are working, um, through Mr. Pill.
I was speaking this afternoon with Greg Bish from the Board of Health. And I asked him if there was any, um, any news. From Michelson regarding septic design, and Greg said he had heard nothing.
Yeah, Miss, Miss, we do have a letter from the Board of Health rescinding their approval of Mr. Michelson's septic thing. Because of the expiration of the inspector's license. Uh, Mr. Pill, I mean, not, Mr. Michelson did ask me, or did inform me that he was going to hire an engineer. To, uh, inspect the septic system, and that's where that stands.
The, Jim, again, not to be talking about precedent, the fact that we have never denied an accessory apartment. Has no bearing on any future application, does it?
That's correct. Like I said, the big thing about denial or acceptance is if you deny something, you cannot be arbitrary and capricious. You just can't say, don't want you to do it. You gotta have reasons for it.
What's the comment that you made last time? My past performance does not predict.
Okay, um, anybody else with general information? Then, uh, we'll go to the public hearing on the zoning, um, bylaws. And. I will try to be brief here. The Havley Town Hall conducted a public hearing Tuesday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty, beginning six forty-five in the Second Ward Conference Room. Of the Havley Town Hall. I went to the town hall and I continued that meeting to the Zoom meeting today that we're having here right now. Purpose of the hearing is review the proposed amendments to the Havley Zone Bylaw. Uh, Zoom, amend zone bylaw, section five twenty-four. Parking requirements by changing the amount of whatever required for industrial uses in the industrial zone. Number two, amend sections twenty-five and twenty-eight of the bylaw by adding verbiage. With the Havley Affordable Housing Trust Fund in lieu of affordable housing provision. That will not be in a town meeting warrant, so we won't discuss that. Um, amend section one by adding a definition, definition, section one point two. And amend various other sections of the zone bylaw by removing definitions, which will now be in section one point two. That will not be under the, uh, or, that, that's right, Bill, right?
Right, those, at our last meeting, we, we agreed with the moderator to. Uh, to pull those two articles as not being critical.
Right, so we'll only have the amending parking in the industrial zone, which is a zone bylaw. And the general bylaw that we're not even gonna talk about, we'll stop private policy hearing, we can talk about it if we want. The complete tech, the amendments in the zone bylaw may be viewed at Town Clerk's office during normal business hours, published place in the Gazette. May first and eighth. Okay, and the parking requirement zoning in the industrial zone. Um, I'll just briefly hit on that, I'm gonna give kind of a little bit of a same similar presentation at town meeting. Is that several times we have had industrial build proposals. Come in for an industrial building in the, uh, spec, for site plan approval. And in both cases, they had adequate parking. For, or they had adequate space to provide the parking for the size of the building. Um, one, one of the buildings was never built, the other ones that are in, uh, obviously industrial park have been built. And the one that wasn't built, they were proposing, I believe, about a forty. Was it a forty thousand square foot building, Joe? Remember that old medical?
Yeah, HBO McKesson, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's where they're originally located, correct.
It was about a forty thousand square foot building. They were gonna have about. Less than a dozen employees and a few visitors. They needed parking for about twenty cars. However, under the bylaw, they would have needed to, they needed to provide eighty thousand square feet of parking. They had a big enough parcel to put the reserved parking in, that was okay. But in the scope of things, if an industrial process building only, it was, you know, you're not getting any. We're getting very little tax money on this unused, uh. Parking area and just, just a big green lawn. We kept, we'd get far more money if we had a real industrial building and parking that they require. And that's the whole in, intent behind this bylaw is that. Put in enough parking to meet the need because industrial buildings typically don't need oodles of parking. Because they have employees and usually very few visitors. And we stand to get a lot more tax money out of more buildings on the property. Than just green space when they're not even going to be used for anything. And it's only for industrial buildings. If it's a business use, it doesn't qualify.
I think the owners must realize that they're putting themselves in a little bit of a, uh. Some handcuffs on them because if they ever wanna sell that particular piece of property, and I use the example of Amazon and their. Their little vans, uh, they would need more parking and they would not be able to sell that property, even though they may get a very lucrative offer. So, uh, that, that's the negative side for the, for the next generation perhaps to worry about.
That's, that's a business decision, though.
Yeah.
But if their site had the space for additional parking that they didn't develop because of the industrial. The reduced industrial requirements, isn't that something that they could? Or are you saying if they bought a site that was sized smaller?
What, what I'm saying is, go back to the building that was forty thousand square feet, and they, they were, they were required to put in eighty thousand square feet of parking. I think they only needed, if I remember, something like fifteen thousand square feet of parking to meet their needs.
Yeah.
But therefore, an acre and a half parcel would have sufficed for them as opposed to a three acre site.
Right.
So, the acre and a half would indeed, uh.
Be undersized.
Limit the future use of that property.
Right.
Okay, but like the Mike's, no, that's, that's a business decision. And I'm not sure, can we, Bill, can we require deed restrictions on some of this stuff?
Uh. I don't think so, and I don't think we need deed restrictions. Um, it'll always be subject to the zoning. Um. You got a nonconforming use in there, you can't make it more nonconforming, so, uh.
Okay.
I, I think it's fine, and, and the, it may change the other way too. You don't wanna restrict the use of a property to something that is later. Allowed.
Right, yeah.
So, Mark, we did not require the additional parking, that was within our jurisdiction. But it was the green space that was available and it was so calculated in the drainage, et cetera. So, at any time if they needed more parking or another business needed more parking, it was available to them.
Yeah, that's, that's where, it was, uh, something Langley Ford or something like that?
Yes, that's, that's what it was.
Yeah, it wasn't HBO, but it was, uh.
That's right, they want to move from Amherst to Hadley.
Right, that's where we worked up the concept of reserve parking. Mm-hmm, which is to say that we don't require that you pave anything more than you're going to use. But in order to comply with the bylaw, you have to have the other space available. You can't put up a second building there.
And you can't count it as your green space.
Correct.
Yeah, and, you know, that's fine and dandy for somebody that wants to plan for the future. But if somebody wants to plan for right now and get as much as they could out of a parcel, you know, like I said. Instead of using three acres of land, they're gonna use roughly an acre and a half, put up a building. Now you still have another acre and a half to put up another building that would, that could provide more potential tax money for the town.
Yeah, and bear in mind, these, we're specifically talking about changing the parking requirement for one class of business. In the industrial district.
Right.
So, um, you're not gonna have bumping up against residences, um.
Well, and as Jim says, this, this makes economic sense from the tax perspective for the town of Hadley.
Yeah.
Not, not wasting, wasting.
I mean, it's not like we have an oodle, oodles, we're not like we have oodles amount of industrial land that we have to worry about this going up. I mean, this, we were limited on our, we're limited on our accessible industrial land. We have a decent amount of industrial land zoned, but much of it is not accessible for a bunch of reasons. Okay, any other discussion?
Yes, that's it. I'll make a motion that we recommend adoption of the bylaw at a town meeting.
Second.
Second, motion to second, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any other, anybody else? Any, any else? Motion passes unanimously. Um, what else have we got? That's it.
Uh, we could do a reorganization of the board.
Yes.
I recommend that Jim Maximowski be chairman.
Second.
Any other nominations? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I'd next recommend Bill Dwar as clerk.
Does that agree? Second.
Any other nominations? Motion second, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And I would like to recommend that we hold off on the other appointments, the CPA, the Pioneer Valley, uh, people until probably after the town meeting, because, uh, if some people may be interested in, in, in the position on the Community Preservation Act, I think it's fair that they'd have some time to look into and see what it entails, so they can either refuse or accept if their name is thrown out there.
Okay. I, I have recommended to, uh, David Nixon, I'll recommend it probably on the town meeting floor, that to get this, uh, trust fund committee off the ground, the planning board will volunteer to be, the, the trust fund trustees, um, for the time being, just so we can have a committee, a trust fund committee, right, trustees, by the way, to get the money into the town coffers.
Is that the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yes, uh, yeah, I suggest.
Have a select board member on it?
It does have, have a select board member. It, it's, uh, the board is appointed by the select board and it has a select board member on it.
Right.
Which I think is the only specific requirement. I had sent a copy of the statute around a while back, but.
One planning board and one board of select member. And then other members at large, or you can have more, more than, minimum of five, you could have more than five, and there's nothing to say there couldn't all be the planning board to make up the, the other, the balance. Now, like I said, that's, that's initially just to get a board of trustees to get the money into the town coffers, and then they can start looking for other people down the road.
Yeah, that makes sense, because we're up to speed, we're more up to speed than anyone else about what's involved with this, you know?
Makes sense.
So.
I agree.
Um, that's all I have.
That's, I have nothing else, anybody else?
I'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate Joe Zagronic on his reelection to the board entering his forty-fifth year, and I would say that his insights tonight prove that his membership on the board are perhaps more important, more important than ever. I'd like to point out that he got a majority of votes in Hadley, fifty-four percent.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, some other, some other people that won town elections did not get a majority of the vote, I wanted to point out, so even though the reporter from Delian Gisette said you edged out the opponent, I think that was a little editorializing, I think you have a mandate to continue, continue your good work, Dr. Zagronic.
Thank you for your kind words, Michael. You reiterated just as I wrote it down.
Yeah, congratulations, Joe, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have nothing else, I'm assuming we will do a Zoom meeting for our next meeting.
I'm sure it sounds like it, I think it's gonna be relieved of, of the, uh, requirements for at least another month or so.
Wow.
So. The, uh, I don't know if we can all get a haircut probably in a couple of weeks.
May a member, um, of the public ask a question?
Absolutely.
Uh, when is the next meeting of the planning board, please?
I believe it's June second, right?
We meet the first and third Tuesday of every month.
Including summer months?
Yes, all year round, unless it's a holiday, or, unless it's a holiday. If it's an election day, we still have a meeting, but we just can't hold a public hearing.
Right, right, understood, thank you. Um, as another point of clarification, did I hear earlier in the call, maybe I heard this incorrectly, that there is, this is rolling into a ZBA meeting, or did I hear that incorrectly?
No, it is not rolling into a ZBA.
Excellent, excellent, thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Um, if you have, if, if you have any questions on the ZBA meeting, um, you can call Building Inspector's Office, they're kind of scheduled through that office.
Terrific, thank you, thank, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Um, June second, do we, is that any, uh, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, or no? I forgot when we put them off to.
Um, I don't think we.
I don't think we set a, uh, date.
We just set another date for a meeting with Ken, um, he was gonna work on getting the contract to us and a few other little things, we haven't set another date for him. I'll get to talk with Ken and find out when, you know, when we wanna touch, touch base with him again. Probably the, I would think maybe the third, third Tuesday of June might be a better timing, Bill, 'cause we really don't have a lot to talk about yet, unless he has a contract.
Okay, I'll, um, uh, I will try to find the, uh, and send around again, the, uh, work program
Okay.
uh, items that he had, uh, he, he had collected the, uh, the work program for the last ten years or so, and there were a lot of things on there that, as I looked over them, we never got to them, but they were, uh, things we'd like to maybe revisit. But I'll send that around.
Okay.
Excuse me, Jim, one last question, um, meeting minutes, are they approved by your board?
When I get to them.
Okay, and are the agenda items on, you, are the meeting minutes part of an agenda item and accepted into the records?
Yes, they will be when they're, when we get to them.
Okay, are they also posted, um, publicly and online for access to the public?
Uh, if you, uh, at the moment, they exist in the form of my handwritten notes, because we have no staff and I have no way, I, I just don't have enough time to get them out, if you would like to see the minutes, so, uh, I'll be happy to scan my notes to you at any time.
But Amy, Amy, you can, uh, uh, our television, we're on television now, uh, can give you a live recap of our meeting, too, so you can request it that way, it's probably a little.
Sure, sure, no, I can appreciate that, I think, you know, meeting minutes are certainly the most, um, expedient way to review what's happening in, in any public board meeting, so thank you, appreciate that.
Okay.
So, uh, That, that being said, just getting back to the fact that these are broadcast, let's assume that meeting minutes were drafted and we voted on them and we approved them, and let's assume someone went back and watched a record, one of the recordings and said that, well, this should have been in the minutes, do we have to go back and amend the minute?
Oh.
Or the minutes is official record of the meeting?
It depends what they say should be in the minutes, there is, the state requirement for taking meeting minutes is specific.
Well, wasn't there an issue with the property off of Middle Street and Cogia Drive, if something was left out, left out of the minutes, that was perhaps important?
That was the zoning board of appeals.
Ah, okay.
Oh, yeah, that. Yeah.
Yes, I, uh, do not, I do not make verbatim accounts of lawyers' closing statements necessarily. Um, we're just supposed to have an outline of what we decided and the basic reasons why we decided something.
Wasn't there a, uh, weren't we trying out to see if John could draft up?
We, uh, that prob, that, that has a flaw in it.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, it, nothing to do with John, uh.
Just a question of what's important, what isn't, you know?
Uh, it, it, it's, it's a personnel matter, uh, I can explain it privately if you want, but it's, it's no reflection on John.
No, okay.
Just purely a ruling from the HR department.
Okay.
So, uh, I, to our visitors, I am, uh, happy to add you, I have a fairly extensive mailing list for the agenda that goes out usually the Thursday or Friday before the next meeting. Um, and I'm happy to add to the agenda, to the mailing list, anybody who's interested in getting a copy of the agenda. If you would like to get a copy of it, just, uh, drop me an email at planning@hadleyma.org and, um, just ask, ask to be put on the mailing list for the agendas, and we will add you to that.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, so if that is it, I guess I can end the meeting.
Looking to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is history, and thank you, and thank you, John.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Aye.